I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Desiree, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognition of visitors, citizens, and that. See no one. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, October 26, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. And we do have a proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October 2021 has been declared as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas the family violence results from the use of force or threat to achieve and maintain control over others in intimate relationships, and abuse of power in society fosters battering by perpetuating conditions which condone violence, and only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas the Raton Alternatives to Violence and other agencies throughout the state of New Mexico are working together to provide effective intervention, prevention, community education, and support to build a nonviolent family environment in our city. Now therefore do I, James N. Sigata Jr., Mayor of the City of Rato, New Mexico, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And witness where I have here until you set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Rato to be affixed this 12th day of October 2021. Okay, nobody's here, so we will get that too then. All right. Items from citizens present, if anyone is here wishing to address the commission on anything that is not on the agenda, may do so at this time. You're good. You're on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of minutes for regular meeting held on September 28, 2021. Have a chance to go through them.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting held on September 28, 2021. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on event forms, Raton Main Street Safe Trick or Treat. Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mayor Commission, we are going to talk about a couple of Halloween-related events that staff has been working on with some of our local groups here. And we'll start with the Raton Main Street Safe Trick or Treat. This is an event that has happened in previous years. I do have a description of the scope of event here that I'm going to read to you and to the public. Raton Main Street and the Raton Police Officers Association are happy to continue our 12th Annual Community Tradition by once again sponsoring this year's Safe Trick or Treat Event. The event will be going back to our original way of doing it, where the trick-or-treaters will walk down the streets of Rato and visit participating businesses. The RPOA will sponsor a costume contest for boys and girls at Ripley Park at 3:30 PM. And then the event will end at the Elks Lodge, where the trick-or-treaters will receive a hot dog and punch. Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, this event will take place on October 29, as stated, beginning at 3:30 and expected to wrap up in 6:00, at 6:00 PM. It will generally consist of a lot of pedestrians, a lot of small children throughout the downtown area. Uh, this is something that we are familiar with. You can see that staff has reviewed, uh, the event, and our recommendation to the commission is for your approval.
All righty, thank you. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. So move. A motion and a second to approve the event, Raton Main Street Safe Trick or Treat. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Lions Club and RPOA Halloween Maze. Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mayor Commission, we have a couple of things going on here. We want to talk specifically about the Halloween Maze. I believe that Raton's Lion Club and RPOA are also working on a haunted house that we can talk about. We do have Adella Garcia present here from the Lions Club to answer any questions you might have or present information on the event. But specifically on the Halloween Maze, um, I'm going to call Adella up and we can talk about the specifics on it. But, uh, the proposal is for October 31st. Uh, this is for children, small children specifically. Uh, the times are 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And, uh, one thing that's happened during the discussion of the review of the event, and Adella, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, the Halloween Maze would be constructed from hay bales or straw bales, and it would be constructed, uh, at the multimodal area in the grassed area.
Correct, near the art gallery.
Cool. So we are not contemplating a street closure for this event.
Cool.
And it won't be very big. It'll, you know, just kind of small, just for the little kids to, to make it through there.
Sounds like fun. I stand corrected, Marty. Any, any other questions or comments right now? Or, Mr. Berry? I think it's going to be a great event. Yeah, I'm forward to it.
So we are working with the group for a, uh, a haunted house and the Doggy Styles building.
Yes, sir.
And that will now take place over two successive weekends.
Correct, the 22nd and 23rd from 8:00 to 11:00. And then the 29th, 30th, and 31st also from 8:00 to 11:00. And, uh, it's going to be in the basement of Doggy Styles by Kathleen. And, uh, we're going to have characters walking around, uh, outside as well, dressed up. I have already spoke to independent writers for like crowd control, just so they can be walking around as well. And then of course, in the basement, we'll have lots of characters, lots of spooky things. And I dare you to, we're going to have a trial run this Saturday at 7:00. And I would like to invite all of you to go and, and, uh, see what you think.
Cool.
And we'll be doing that at 7:00 this Saturday.
So that's, that's probably a little more, you know, above the level of the small children, like kind of a different group. And we will, on, on both of these events, and the previous event, uh, we will, in our city emergency services, will provide the life, safety inspection of everything that we're talking about.
Cool.
Uh, Josh from the Fire Department has already gone once and inspected it. And he will also be there Saturday evening to make sure that everything that, uh, he suggested we do gets done.
Okay.
And you do have staff recommendation for approval of these Halloween events as well.
All right. I will move to approve the Lions Club and RPOA Halloween Maze and haunted dungeon.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, very good.
Good girl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, hope to see you Saturday, if you dare.
We might.
And when does that Sees Chocolate come in?
I'm sorry?
Since we have your attention, does Sees Chocolate?
Uh, you have till the end of November to order. And then it comes in the first part of December.
Okay, I think I ordered.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's on our website, Lions Club.
Okay.
And I put it on Facebook and everything, so.
Cool.
So, thank you.
You bet, thank you. All right. Item C, introduction of ordinance enacting and adopting the 11th supplement to ordinance 940 for the City of Rato, New Mexico, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, you do have an introduction, uh, of the ordinance. We'll have to get the number from the city clerk as we move this forward. So this would be the introduction, uh, enacting and adopting a supplement to ordinance 940 for the City of Rato, New Mexico, and declaring emergency. A couple of things, uh, ordinance 940 is the codification ordinance originally adopted in 2005. This would be the 11th supplement to that. Uh, the term declaring an emergency would allow this to become effective immediately upon approval by the city commission. That's not happening tonight, but ultimately, uh, it would be scheduled for a public hearing and, uh, set up for your adoption at a subsequent meeting.
All righty. Any questions for Mr. Berry? This is introduction, so we would entertain a motion to introduce this ordinance.
I make a motion to introduce the ordinance?
A motion and a second to introduce the ordinance enacting and adopting the 11th supplement to ordinance 940 for the City of Rato, New Mexico, and declaring an emergency. Any further discussions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on purchase of police department CAD system utilizing CES contract number 2021-29S111-ALL and approval of SHI International Core Software License and Support Agreement. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, you recall, uh, back in the 21 legislative session, we did ask for capital outlay for police, uh, equipment and modernization of, 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 uh, police department. And, uh, we did receive some funding. It wasn't what we had asked for, but we did receive $70,000 of funding from the legislature. Uh, subsequently, we did receive a grant agreement, and we are, uh, clear to go ahead with procurement for that. Our biggest need right now is replacement of the computer-aided dispatch system, uh, that we utilize. The system that we have is, is antiquated, as has, has been a lot of the, uh, systems that we had over there when we started this modernization program. Uh, this is an important one, um, and you do see the price. It's $104,000. Um, I can tell you this, $4,000 of that, uh, is a fee that is associated with the purchase off of the Cooperative Education Services, uh, contract. So you see that CES contract referenced there, and, uh, the $100,000, uh, I think is a very favorable price for the City of Rato. In a different circumstance, uh, this could have been upwards of, well over $200,000 for this. So I think this firm, uh, is SHI, and they're proposing, uh, the ProPhoenix CAD, uh, software, as you see detailed there. Uh, they're really giving Rato favorable pricing on this at the $100,000. Um, however, we do have $70,000 of, of legislative funds, of capital outlay funding for this, and so that leaves a balance of $34,000. Um, that would come from general fund reserve. And I would recommend to the commission, uh, approval of this proposal to SHI for the ProPhoenix CAD, uh, system at $104,000 and your concurrence with the expenditure of $34,000 out of general fund reserves.
Any questions for Mr. Berry? I have one. On the annual support fee, is that something that's currently budgeted now with the existing system, or is this going to be an initial fee?
It is, Mayor. That's not covered by any grant funds, of course. And you do see, uh, annual support fee ranging from, you know, around $13,000 upwards of $16,000. That's something that we have, uh, currently.
Okay.
We do pay that currently. So, uh, that would be really a continuation. I'm sure that it's, it's probably higher over the years, as you see, but, uh, that's an expense that we budget for currently.
All right. Small question. Any other questions?
Actually went to their website, looked and watched testimonials and whatnot, and it looks pretty impressive, the different things that they offer.
Cool.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the purchase of police, for a CAD system utilizing CES contract 2021-29S111-ALL and approval of the SHI International Core Software License and Support Agreement.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of the CAD system. Is there any further discussion?
Um, I, I would recommend, if you could, uh, allow for one of staff to, uh, to execute the, the documents as well, in this particular case.
I'd make a motion to reflect that.
Okay. Agreed. All righty. So we have a motion to approve the purchase of the CAD system with the authority given to a member of staff to sign for the agreement from that. Uh, Desiree, could we have a roll call vote for this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
All righty, motion approved. Thank you. Contract approved. Item E, deliberate and act on bid award for aquatic center repairs and maintenance project. Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mayor Commission, this would be the second phase of aquatic center, uh, repairs and maintenance that, uh, what we've talked about over the past year, uh, is that the aquatic center has been in operation for the last 10 years. And, uh, really, I would tell you, that's a, a continuous operation. A lot of the systems, uh, really don't stop. And so we had, uh, Phase 1, which has been completed, uh, where we replaced a number of pumps, pump controls, uh, piping systems that were giving us, uh, problems. And then we started working our way towards, uh, the shower rooms and the dressing rooms. And we did some of those repairs in the first phase, and we learned a lot about the plumbing, uh, that is behind the wall. And based on what we learned, we put together a Phase 2, uh, request for bids that would consist of, uh, more plumbing repairs of, uh, leaks that we've got going behind the, the walls and, uh, and, and all of the changing rooms. Um, also the replacement of some, uh, metal stalls, um, lighting systems, uh, security cameras for the facility, and, uh, in general, uh, replacement of, of things that were giving us a problem there. Now, at the time, uh, we didn't have really a firm, uh, estimate of what that would cost, but we had a, a budget in mind of around $50,000, maybe north of that. Um, however, we were kind of cautioned by the bidder that, uh, because of some of the things going on in the world today, some of these, the equipment and materials that we had specified, uh, went up significantly. Uh, and we were kind of shocked, and I think they were kind of shocked by, uh, this final bid price. But the bid price is $179,000, and when you add in GRT, it's over $194,000. We were expecting in the 50, maybe $75,000 range. Uh, now, we do not have grant funds for the project. This is, uh, all City of Rato funds funded by the Increment for Capital Improvements, uh, dedicated to the Aquatic Center. Um, but this is a lot of money. So you see in the recommendation from, uh, staff that we would recommend, uh, rejecting this bid, and we, we're, we're not going to do nothing after that, but I think that we would repackage the procurement to, to do part of the project and move this forward, really the, the most serious parts of it, which are leaks, plumbing leaks. Uh, but we would take a lot of, a lot of the, the work out of this. Um, we think the price is just too high. It's, it's well past double what we would expect it, uh, maybe close to triple. And so, uh, it's, uh, I would concur with the, uh, with the chief procurement officer here that we would reject this bid.
All righty, thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Berry?
Well, being in the middle of a construction project myself, I would say, you know, and it's wise to just, uh, relook at things and, uh, you know, the talk is that a few prices will go down, not probably down to what we want. So I will move to reject this bid.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to reject the bid. Is there any further discussion?
Well, you know, if, if we generally felt that it was around the 50,000, even if you double that, this is still three times over that, so.
Yeah.
I agree with it.
And with what we've done already, we don't have any issues with using the facility as is?
The facility is back open again. It's operational again. Um, uh, we, we do need to do some repairs, but yes, the, the, the facility is fully functional at this, at this juncture.
I have no other questions. Any other comments? Hey, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. We reject this bid. Item F, deliberate and act on revised managed services contract with Envision IT. Mr. Berry.
Envision IT is, uh, our, our firm that provides our IT services. I would say, uh, they're very good. There is a, uh, an expense that goes with this, but in today's environment, you know, absolutely necessary. And so one thing you can see from the amendment to managed services, um, is that the, the computer count has gone up. And of course, we've hired a couple of, uh, staff members and, uh, raised the count. And so, of course, we pay per account, uh, and then you see a total monthly cost proposed, $2,530. That really includes, uh, the 22, uh, user count, s- services regarding servers and data backup. And so, uh, would certainly recommend approval of this amendment to the Managed Service Agreement.
All righty. Questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I'd make a motion to approve the revised management services contract with Envision IT.
I'll second it. A motion and a second to approve the amendment with the contract with services with Envision IT. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item G, deliberate and act on resolution 2021-62, budget adjustment number 2, fiscal year 22. And I guess, Mr. Berry, you're up on this.
Mayor Commission, when you came in tonight, you did see a revised, uh, budget adjustment, uh, number 2, Exhibit A. And in this revision, you do see the $34,000 general fund reserve, uh, uh, for the, the CAD system that we just talked about, uh, reflected in this, which was not in the, in the, uh, copy in your packet. Uh, so that's included there now. Uh, in general, you see some, uh, adjustment of funds, uh, that is, comes out to be about a wash for, uh, the general fund. You see, uh, an adjustment regarding animal control, building maintenance, pet food. Of course, uh, there's some adjustment going on in regard to zoning and code enforcement salaries, the community facility manager salary, um, and, and then library. And then, uh, see some more minor adjustments. Um, but you do see, uh, the cost of the PAPI, uh, project, something we talked about at the airport, the Precision Approach Plane Indicator. So the total amount to the contractor is, uh, $60,085. Uh, as we said, it's really a pass-through, uh, cost that will be paid for by, uh, state aviation funding and FAA funding. So, um, I'll answer any questions that the commission might have, uh, on this budget adjustment number 2.
Any questions?
Would you like to approve the resolution 2021-62, budget adjustment number 2, fiscal year 22?
A motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2021-62, fiscal year 22 budget adjustment number 2. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item H, City Manager Report. Mr. Berry.
You know, Mayor, got to really apologize to Commissioner Chavez. We were moving along pretty, pretty quickly in the meeting till we reached this item, but, uh, I did, along with a number of you, attend the watershed and dam owners conference that was held at the Rato Convention Center, uh, September 29th, 30th, and October 1st. Uh, the program had focused on healthy watersheds, extreme precipitation, uh, safe operation and maintenance of dams, and how to fund those things. Uh, the speakers included, Mayor Sigata, um, Representative Jack Chatfield, uh, was here, and the keynote speaker was Senator Pete Campos. We had about 75 or 80 attendees. They came from around New Mexico and, uh, a, a number of neighboring states. Uh, the conference included a tour of Malloya Dam, Seagrim Stream Restoration Project, uh, and Dorothy Dam, and the field trip was attended by about 40 people. So I think that was a very successful, uh, convention that we brought to Rato. Um, it, it took a couple of years to get that here, and we would like to do more meetings like that between 100, 150 people, uh, that are here for three days. So I think that's good for local business at the right time of year. And it was a good conference. Uh, I have been informed that, uh, there is an agenda pending for the State Board of Finance and, uh, for their October 19th meeting, and that will include their consideration of approval for the Kearney School transfer. Uh, we will also, we're also waiting for approval from the local government division, but we would expect to have that complete, uh, by the end of October. And come November, be talking about submission of our application for EDA funding, uh, for the Kearney School project. Um, we did meet with Senator Pete Campos at Tiger Stadium this morning. Uh, in attendance was Mayor Sigata and Commissioner Chavez. Uh, we were there to support the, uh, Rato Public Schools' request for capital outlay for, uh, track and for field improvements at that facility. And we also did have a chance to talk about, uh, the needs of the city, uh, in the upcoming legislative session as far as capital outlay. Specifically, Senator is interested in the Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition, expansion of sugary canyon state park, and improvements to Lake Malloya Dam. So we spent some time, uh, talking about those things. Uh, our project to install electric vehicle chargers is, uh, progressing forward at the, uh, parking lot of the multimodal facility. Our contractor is, uh, Rain Electrical Construction. They are, uh, progressing with that, and I would, uh, estimate that those will be operational within about three weeks. Uh, one other construction project I'll report to the commission, uh, Tiger Drive was closed today. Uh, BNSF was replacing the street crossing at Tiger Drive. Um, I understand that they will complete that work today, uh, but we will remain closed tomorrow and possibly for two days. Uh, Public Works will be doing street repairs related to, uh, the rail crossing there. But it ought to be a much improved, uh, crossing for, uh, for vehicle traffic, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Chatterley.
I'll be very quick. Uh, I was thinking, just with our different weather changing and coming on about, um, and with the different people on the agenda about emergency management, so I was looking on our website, and I was reminded that we do have the 72-hour kit information on there. There's information to help people create an emergency plan. There's stuff about winter weather safety and lots more. So I put that link on my commission Facebook page, or you can also go under the Government section, down to Departments and Emergency Management, and you will find that information. I think it's, it's a good thing to have in your mind, especially have your car ready as we get into winter.
All righty. Thank you. Commissioner Jacamo. Commissioner Chavez.
Nothing.
Mayor Protem.
I'll just second with four, so it's a good idea.
I'll, I'll be real brief, too. Just past Saturday, myself and three other mayors were in Espanola. Uh, Mayor Javier Sanchez of Espanola, his family owns La Cosina Restaurant there. Uh, like everyone else in the hospitality industry, they are short-staffed, having trouble staying open. We got a wild hair in our, in our minds during the conference, and four of us mayors volunteered to go be his staff on Saturday. It was myself, Mayor Greg Hull of Rio Rancho, Mayor Nate Duckett of Farmington, and Mayor Mike Morris of Clovis. Mike unfortunately bowed out the night before. He had something come up. But we were there and, uh, got a whole new appreciation for hospitality staff, waiters and busboys and that. It's, it's work. It is absolute work, but we're, wanted to bring the awareness to small businesses and that, is that your city officials and leaders have not forgot you. We want to be there for you. We will help out physically if we have to, and it's something we're looking at possibly moving around in some other communities in the state. But it was well worth the effort, and I hope we brought some attention to folks realizing we need to provide these services and that, so these businesses can survive. and that, so these businesses can survive and that, so. But it was, it was, it was fun.
Well, good for you guys. I think that was great.
I've got pictures if anybody wants to see.
Yeah, shot them up.
All right. Thank you. Sunday I couldn't move. We had aprons that had embroidered, said, "Thanks," or I can't remember what it said, you know, but it had Mayor Neil Segada, City of Rattone, and all of that. Greg Hull was handing out coffee cups that says, "Keep calm, I'm the mayor." It was, it was, it was a good time.
That's great.
What was the idea of that?
You know, I walked into the conversation a little late. Javier was talking about how hard it was to stay open, and I actually think it was Greg Hull's, Mayor Hull's idea to volunteer. He volunteered all of us since we were standing, so. But it, it, it came off, so.
I think it was a good move.
It was, it was very good. And I, like I said, we're thinking about moving around to some communities, possibly maybe even here in Rattone, we'll bring them up, and you guys can come pick on the mayors.
Ooh, sweet.
That's all I have. This meeting is adjourned.
That was speedy.